I'm calling the Newcastle City Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, February 20, 2024 to order. Please rise for the march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Can they get approval of the agenda?
I don't remember. I move that we approve the agenda.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Can I get the approval of the agenda for the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, February 5, 2024?
I don't remember. I move that we approve the minutes.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do we have any nominations for recognition? Okay, we don't have any certificates. Citizens Business Burbel, Weston County, Unstoppable Generation. Anyone come on up?
So we do have papers.
Perfect.
You guys, we only printed ten copies, and there's eleven, you guys, but that's it.
Thank you.
Peyton Manning made their name good, right?
Spelled the same way, too. Well, hi, everyone. My name is Chloe Smith. And I'm Peyton Crinkler. And we wanted to come and talk to you guys about a nonprofit. We are in the process of trying to start. We both were born and raised in Newcastle and know that this community has amazing potential, but it also lacks in some areas when it comes to the youth because we're such a small community. There's only so much that's offered right now. Growing up, I had a very bad childhood, for lack of better words. I was in and out of foster care. I spent from eighth grade until I turned eighteen as a foster youth in the Newcastle area. And I was kind of just expected to know how to be a functioning adult after I turned eighteen with no support. And our community has a lot of minors in the area that are struggling with things without the support. And that is what we are trying to implement. What we gave you guys was our business plan and proposal. And underneath, if you go, there is a document called "What Do We Offer?", which is what we'll kind of explain to you guys now. Something that we are working really hard to get up off the ground are biweekly groups. And these groups will meet every Sunday from 1:00 to 6:00, so the kids saw the opportunity to attend church, and it doesn't interfere with their sports games. We will split into three age groups: K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. Obviously, there's a difference in maturity within those three groups. We wanted to be very particular about splitting them. And each week, we will focus on a different topic. We will go over consent, independent living skills, how do you fill out a job application? What do you need to wear to a job interview? How do you speak to a potential employer? We've met with multiple businesses in the community, and when you're talking to them, they're like, "We want to hire these kids. We can't read their names on the job applications. We can't read what their phone number is to call them back." Or you get kids that don't even know how to sign their name. They can't write cursive. I know when we spoke with Pam, she was talking about how in her businesses, she works with the kids on cursive because it's not something that is known. They struggle with that. So that's a lot of the independent living skills we want to work on. We have gotten ample donations from people in the community to help these people that are foster kids that come out and they're trying to figure out stuff on their own. They don't realize that you need pots and pans, that you need cups and plates and those things that are just provided as a kid. And sadly, in society today, there is a lack in parental guidance in some of those areas. We also want to work a lot with emotional regulation, speaking with the high schoolers and even down to the kindergartners. Today's society works a lot on electronics. So when you come to a setting where your boss tells you that you can't have a raise, or your teacher fans you, and you are mad about it, kids don't know how to respond. They get in front of this person of authority, and then they're turned down on something, and instead of having those responsible adult conversations, they freak out because that emotional regulation isn't there. It's no longer taught because we're a society of electronics. We want to work with them a lot on money management also. We went to the career fair, and at the career fair, we were speaking with a lot of the kids and asking them, like, if they understand budgeting or how to do a balance checkbook, and they just stare at you, and they have no idea. And I was in that same boat. I turned eighteen, I got an apartment, and I got kicked out. Couldn't get out of it because I had no idea how to actually look for those things. I luckily did have a good extended family to help me, but some of these kids in the area don't. We also have a lack for education on some of the harder topics. On drugs, there is a problem with drugs in our community. And you hear daily about kids overdosing in the school, kids getting way too high wrecking their cars. And I know that there's a lot of people that preach abstinence, and that is okay. But sometimes that little bit of education on, "If you do this, this is what's going to happen. This is what happens when you're too high. This is what it feels like to be laced. This is what alcohol poisoning feels like." And teaching the kids that the police are not bad, that you can call for help. It's okay to reach out because a lot of the kids are terrified of the police department. And then we have situations like we had not long ago where two girls got strangled in Sundance. They were there for six hours in the freezing cold. They sat there. They were terrified to call for the police because they were drunk and, and it was winter, and they were cold, and they almost froze, until finally, after sitting there for six hours, they called for help. And if you speak to those girls now, they were terrified. They didn't realize that although, yes, you might get in some trouble, they will help you. They will get you to safety. They will find you. And that's something that we really want to work with them on implementing. The next thing on our paper is the MyBags. Being a foster youth that did bounce homes, when you move homes, you have nothing. You have the clothes on your back, and what DFS can pull from your house? And sometimes, in some kids' situations, they can't get anything. So with our MyBags, they're bags that are filled with toiletries, feminine hygiene products. We have clothes in them. If it's a baby, we'll put bottles and Sidney Pups, pacifiers, so that that responsibility doesn't solely fall on foster parents. And so the way that we're running it, and this is mainly what we're working on right now, is we get contacted from members of the community, letting us know of people in need. It doesn't always have to be foster parents. Sometimes family situations change, dynamics change, and they just need a little help. We also have worked with the police department and DFS, and they just contact us and say, "We have a three-year-old, size 2T, a boy." So we gather all the materials, we put it in the bag, we drop it off. We don't need to know who it's for. We don't need to know the information. We just want to be able to provide those kids with the needed necessities at the time. Another thing that we have is called Birthday Bag. It's kind of silly, but there are a lot of kids in low-income families that never get to understand the excitement of coming home and your mom baked you cake, and it's sitting on the counter, or having a birthday party. And a birthday party does not have to be scrappy, but some of those kids have never experienced that. So in these bags, we have cake mix, frosting, an aluminum throwaway pan. We put candles, a little stack of plates and cups. And all that we need is someone to message our page, call our work phone. We'll put that together. All we ask is for the gender of the child and the age, so we can put an age candle in there, and we provide it. We don't ask any other questions. We've let the school district know that if they have kids that they know might be struggling and could use the little bit of extra help, they can contact us and just give us the age and the gender, and we will provide the bags. Something we're working with the school on is monthly drives. We're going to do monthly drives for hygiene products, clothes, coats, et cetera, that wide variety of things. And then all of the proceeds we get from the drives, we keep what we can use in the sense of the MyBags or the Birthday Bags. And other than that, it gets donated to DFS or into the school district. The school just put in hygiene closets, so we're going to do a hygiene drive this next month. And with all those proceeds, that's just going to go into the school's hygiene products cabinet. And then we have something that we have been working on, and it is a mentorship program. We are not the only people in the community that wants to help. And sometimes giving kids incentives and the ability to feel like they're making a difference is extremely important, especially in the youth that are struggling themselves. If you have a sixteen-year-old struggling with something, and they can help the kindergartners and the first graders, it builds their confidence and builds their ability to feel like they can do something. So with our mentor program, kids just contact us, eleventh and twelfth graders. We have fake job applications, pretty much. We'll walk them through the steps of filling out a job application for us. We will work with them on how to make a ledger to keep all of your finances organized. We'll explain a lot of the business aspect of stuff. They can help us make the MyBags, and we'll kind of show them step by step while still saving the confidentiality of our clients, how a business is ran, and how you work with the community. We'll take them with us and when we go to talk to business members and stuff like that and kind of walk them through how do you speak to someone in a higher profession, and how do you have that respectful tone of voice, which is something that they all struggle heavily with right now. We wanted to just come to you guys and get your guys' opinions and try to see what your guys' thought process was on all of this.
So I met with them, and I just thought it was so great because it does take a village. And I think this is a great start to involving the village to help the kids in our community. So I'm pretty proud of you guys.
So when you say "we" all the time, is it just you two that are doing all this?
Yes.
So you feel you're qualified to do all this, like mentoring and...
We are in the process of taking a couple of different courses. The Newark company is helping us get certified in...
And to help first aid, so we can handle those more difficult situations. We're also taking a couple of classes on family and household budgeting and how we can just better help not only the kids, but the parents too. It's me and Chloe, but we also have one more director. Tisha Forrester is our director for the K-5, so we will each only be responsible for one, focusing on one age group and really developing our education in that one age group so we can best help them.
We also don't plan to teach those lessons in groups. So if we're talking about businesses one day, we may call Pam and ask Pam to come in as a business owner, and she can go over her as a business owner, what does she expect? We've talked to multiple people in the community that have offered to come in and give different lessons. We've had some of the women at Newark have been wonderful assets for us, offered to come in and teach different lessons. So some of those harder topics that definitely need to be taught by someone with that training...
Well, I didn't mean you were poor, but you know, do you have that much experience to be doing this, I guess?
That's where we're trying to start.
And I, you know, kudos to you. I mean, I know, I think it's wonderful, but I just... So do you have a point? I mean, do you have a feeling that a...
Yeah, we've had quite a few community outreach sessions on MyBags right now. We've helped almost fifteen people so far in just the three weeks, two weeks that we've been filling them. And then we've had multiple parents and students reach out to us, asking us, "When is group starting? When can we start coming?" And we had an amazing turnout at the career fair.
Where will you need?
Yeah. So right now, we are not doing group because we don't have a building. We're in the process... We're donation funded, so we don't get paid for any of this. This is all out of volunteer. But currently, we're trying to get the funds together to get a building, to have our groups in. If that is not something that's attainable in the next two or three months, DFS has offered their conference room, and we would just go in on Sundays, and that is where we would host. I know Pam has spoken to us and offered to allow us to host our first meeting when the parents and the kids can come at the antlers and do like an ice cream social so that the parents can talk to us and ask us questions. So we've had an amazing community support to help us get on our feet and get going.
So now I've seen something on Facebook just in the past couple of days about a drop-off by the bomb cars on Fridays.
Yes.
Goes left to fill these bags.
Yes, all of the materials we get go straight back into the bags. Or once we get our office open, that's where we'll have groups. So in our office, we're going to have a couch, and we're going to have a TV. So we'll be in office until 5:00 each day. So if students need help on their homework, or they need to come in and ask us, "My math teacher failed me on my test, and I don't know what to do." They can come in, they can sit with us, we can kind of talk them through how to handle those situations. And then if it's something that's out of our reach, we have resources to call, and those people can kind of step in at that point and guide the kids the best way.
So your nonprofit's already formed, then?
We do not technically have our federal nonprofit. We are registered with the state. And we do have our AIN for businesses to donate to us, but we have twenty-nine months. Yes, we have twenty-nine months from the day that we were certified as a state nonprofit to fill out our 501(c)(3). We have contacted a local accountant who is going to help us through that process. It's like two hundred days. It is a very long process. We're in the process of attempting to find an attorney who can help us go over our bylaws and articles of incorporation just so we're protected in a sense if something happens. The police department has been a fantastic help, telling us, like, "Hey, you guys really need to watch out for this. Why don't you guys look into doing this?" So right now, our biggest goal is obtaining an attorney who will just kind of read over it and be like, "Hey, this doesn't work. You need to switch this out."
Do you have liability insurance?
But once we get our articles and bylaws, you have to turn that into any insurance company. So we want to make sure that we have our bylaws and everything solidified before we turn it into a insurance company.
That's a good part of the reason why we have not started groups officially yet either, even with DFS and Pam offering our space because we don't have liability. We don't care. It's safe for us to take in children yet.
That's probably prudent, yeah. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's a very...
Beautiful.
I think it's very, you know, open-minded, and I think it's very thoughtful, yeah. Having been through that situation and wanting to help other people, I think is commendable. So I hope that you guys are able to get this thing going.
That's the goal. We want Newcastle to be viewed as a united front. And sometimes, people in the community, we had to look up who was on the city council, if I'm being honest. We had no idea. So for someone who's just on the street, that knowledge isn't there. So if we could even get our group together, we could work with them, and we could bring them in here to see how a city council meeting works, because this is my first time ever being at a city council meeting.
You're doing a really good job.
So those are... We want Newcastle and the police department, DFS, the sheriff's department, you guys, to be viewed as one. We are a team, so that the kids and the parents can realize we're not just a bunch of random entities. We are one, and we are all here to help everyone. I don't think sometimes people realize that you can reach out and get support because they're so scared of what the repercussions could be.
To be honest, when I saw you guys at the police department the other day, I wasn't sure that you weren't there because you were in some sort of trouble. I'm glad to see that that isn't the case.
I don't know if they weren't.
No, this is fantastic. I really appreciate you guys.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, for coming and sharing.
Absolutely. We do have a business page, and we have our work phone on our business page on Facebook. And our number is on our paperwork. So if any of you guys have advice or input, nonprofits are a challenge, we have figured out. So if you guys have any advice or guidance, we will gladly take it. We are open to any ideas, any advice, anything. Call us. Let us know. Set up meetings. Put in your guys' input because this is something we want to be community-led, not just us against the world.
When do you think you'll have your first Sunday organization meeting?
We're hoping for either a call or a meeting. We would like to have our building. We would like to have insurance solidified and an attorney who has gone over everything. We can start without our government nonprofit license, but until we have that insurance, we don't feel comfortable starting.
Plus, it will give us a little extra time to finish out our certificates and kind of get our education where it needs to be before we can really march this thing out.
You guys are going into a huge undertaking. Don't let all the questions and all the naysayers stop you. Keep after it.
And if you ever feel discouraged or want to listen, we'll relight that fire. Don't be afraid to dream big. And I mean, there'll be failures in between, but just keep your eye on the big picture.
We definitely appreciate you guys allowing us to be here and listening to us. That does mean a lot to us.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Moving on to Citizens Business in writing. We have Renegade Plumbing and Heating and Air LLC. Plumbing, heating, and air LLC. The family requested a plumbing license, and all these have been paid. Copies of their license and proof of insurance and bond have been provided for 2024. Contractor's license is Renegade Plumbing, Heating, and Air LLC. Master plumber is Michael Bogman. And apprentice is Hector Erickson. It's Euro Sanchez. Totally botched those names, but that was the first. Renegade Plumbing, Heating, and Air.
I move that we approve the license for Renegade Plumbing, Heating, and Air LLC.
You think that?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
They were licensed and bonded, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Awesome. Thank you so much. Moving on to Citizens Business in writing, number two. Dudley Randy Dinges.
Dinges.
Dinges and Joshua Cox Sewer Forgiveness. Newcastle City Council Number as the court-appointed personal representative for the estate of my brother Dudley Dinges. I'm writing to request a refund of the sewer charge for his January 30, 2024 water bill. His account number is... For his home located at 3159 West Main Street in Newcastle. The bill in question has a hundred dollars and sixty-six change charged for sewer during that building period. My brother passed away on November 16, 2024, and his home has been unoccupied since that time. As you were aware, the Newcastle area extends to extreme cold conditions during January of January. Unfortunately, during that time, the heating system of my brother's home suffered mechanical issue and quit running. Subsequently, the water pipes under his home froze, resulting in a loss of seventy-eight dollars and seventy-one cents worth of water. While we're no doubt responsible to pay the water charge, I find the charge for sewer to be unreasonable as none of the water in question went into the city sewer system. His monthly utility bill is being paid by an automatic bank draft from his checking account at this time. I respectfully request that the council do consider removing the charge from the bill if it hasn't been paid by the date of receipt and review this request or apply credit to a future monstil if it is already in payment. Additionally, the bill in question is labeled as a final bill, but we did respect the city council's order for us following its willing last while we were waiting for the plumber to make repairs. We did not request this to be a final year. I hope this mistake may have been remedied already, but we need for his accounts to remain active and the water connected until we can finalize the repairs and side hose for the property. I appreciate your consideration on this matter, and I thank you in advance for taking this appropriate action. Sincerely, Randy Dinges, Court-appointed Personal Representative for the Estate of Dudley W. Dinges. So the forgiveness would be seventy-nine dollars and thirteen cents.
I move that we forgive the estate of Dudley W. Dinges. Sewer, forgive us in the amount of seventy-nine thirteen. Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
We should credit that to the bill since...
Has it been paid, though?
Yeah.
Okay, so we would have to credit it to the next. And it has been fixed. That is not the final.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to Citizens Business in writing. Poki Smokehouse.
Joshua Cox.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't see that one. Sorry. Okay. Joshua Cox. I am asking for sewer forgiveness due to having the property rented. There was a water leak that the renter did not inform me of. This leak for at least three days, water had been leaking down the wall into the basement out the door. None of the water went into the drain or sewer. You are able to see water damage throughout the walls. Renter has been evicted and is no longer allowed on the property. Sewer charge for the forgiveness would be for two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents.
I move that we approve the sewer forgiveness in the amount of two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Greg, it didn't go down the sewer, did it? We did not find anything, but I'm sure it did, so we support the sewer forgiveness.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Business in writing, number three. Poki's Smokehouse and Barbecue Twenty-four Hour Catering Permit. So the twenty-four hour catering permit that under and by virtue of the provisions of Section 12-4-502, subsection B of the State of Wyoming Alcohol Beverage Control Laws, the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, and State of Wyoming in consideration of the Summer Film Ball, the K-5, Poki Smokehouse and Barbecue of the City of Newcastle and the County of Weston hereby licensed permits and authorize Poki Smokehouse and Barbecue to sell alcoholic and malt beverages in and upon the premises of Weston County Fairgrounds and Front Center, where they event more specifically, describes as follows, the Rocky Mountain Elk Federation Maydies Event banquet. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on March 9, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. to March 10, 2024, at 9:00 a.m.
I move that we approve the twenty-four hour catering permit for Poki's Smokehouse and Barbecue. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Is this a line? Is this a Wyoming business?
Gillette.
Gillette. Okay. I just wanted to make sure they had a one.
Are they from Gillette? Is that what you just said?
Yeah. Okay.
Can I ask where they were from too? I was hoping that we had a new business starting this whole thing. I'd love me some Pokie Smokehouse.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Any mayor or council member reports?
Can I sneak something in there, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we move standing committee reports on the agenda up to the position before department head reports.
I understand.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
I think that this is gonna streamline our meetings a little bit so that we don't step in on the department heads' reports toes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Can I ask a question? Is this gonna, I had sent you guys all the copy of that ordinance pertaining to the minutes. Are we gonna have to amend that ordinance doubling and have it read?
Yeah, one of the things with just it being the ordinance is that we would probably, we would need to have it actually drafted and just change the the manner in which it's laid out. The thing with that section is that there's not really a, there's not any teeth to it. So if there, if you have it here or there, it's not a massive issue. But I think just for future councils, I think it would be a good idea to actually have that put into an ordinance.
It takes a motion first, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Any other mayor, council?
No, that's all I can, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Well, then we'll go to standing committee reports.
Did we ever vote on that?
No, we did vote. I thought we didn't. Okay, so all, well, I thought you said all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I don't know, you discussed. Now it's for standing committee reports.
What, actually, we had a sanitation committee meeting, but I had to, I missed the meeting. So I met with Public Works Supervisors today prior to this meeting. So unless you guys wanna add anything. Are you guys good? Okay, we discussed upending timeframes for garbage truck replacement from ten years to five years. I didn't know if you guys were favorable to that. I personally am.
Five years?
I would like to see less than ten. Five years would be ideally.
I thought it was eight.
You mentioned seven to eight, so we're married.
Oh, I thought I read five on the note.
That's what I'd like. But.
But, so we'd like to up the timeframe. Is it favorable to the rest of the committee that we make the recommendation that we do it quicker than ten years?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, it's the recommendation of the committee that we do it quicker than ten years on the garbage truck replacement. Because as you know, Madam Mayor, we're kind of getting nickled and dined with the amount that we spend.
More like hundred dollar bills.
Fifty minutes.
Yeah, to replace and repair parts on the old garbage trucks, so.
If I can add to that, our oldest truck is eighteen years old. Most people don't have cars that old here. We're trying to run a garbage service. Our newest truck is eight years old.
So I think along those lines is, you know, as a city, we need to look at replacing our equipment in a more timely fashion so that it doesn't cost us so much in maintenance. It'd just be the fiscally responsible thing to do. Then we also, it was discussed at the committee meeting about the landfill number one remediation. There's still some more preliminary meetings that need to go with the DEQ. And right now, there's seventy percent of the engineered plans going on. So that's just to let you know that we met on it and discussed remediation of landfill number one. And then the final item was the roll-off containers. Maybe you're thinking about purchasing some smaller roll-off containers, but it sounds like the committee isn't willing to recommend that we do that at this time. So that's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to department head reports, City Clerk Tricia Stacey.
All I have is I wanted to make sure that everybody received the link for the new website. Just to look at that, it's obviously not public yet, but. Just need some updating, so.
Walter wants to talk to you.
Do you have a timeframe when that will be public?
I do not. We need to, we actually have a lot of outdated material as far as for us department heads to get updated. So it's just a lot of.
Your predecessor is in your picture. Where is she?
So just updates on our side of things.
Will you keep me informed as to when that is so I can pass that on?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Any questions for City Clerk?
No, I think the websites looking really nice, especially like the first opening page.
It jumps at you.
Public Works Supervisor, Rachel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item I have, we interviewed Dan Dahl for a full-time position, one year probation. I'd recommend we hire Dan Dahl for general labor with one year probation at eighteen dollars an hour.
I move that we hire Dan Dahl.
Are you talking about Danny Dahl that used to live here?
Yeah. I move that we hire Dan Dahl for the full-time labor position with one year probation starting at.
Eighteen.
Eighteen dollars an hour.
Second. So we have a second here.
Okay, we got a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't know Dan Dahl and I, I don't know, is there some way that like these things can come before the personnel committee and we get a, we get a shot at knowing these people before we hired them? Just like the police officer that we hired. I don't mind that we hired a police officer. It's just that I did not know him and didn't get. The last time we hired a chief, I mean, we got a, you were a shoe-in, but anyway. We got, we got informed. I mean, we got resumes, we had, we had things like that. And I'm just wondering, I don't like to vote for anybody or anything if I'm sitting here totally ignorant of the person or what I'm doing. I just, I won't vote for somebody like that.
So along those lines, back to the council meeting that we had prior. I mean, that's just a concern of mine as well. When we're talking about putting somebody on the planning and zoning thing, I understand that there's a need and we need to fill those positions. But I also, on the other hand, would like to properly vet some of these people so that we have a, you know, have an idea if they have our community's best interest in mind. I work all over the state and there's a lot of people that are moving here. And we don't always know if they share the same views and values that our community has. So it would just be nice to maybe talk to the people before we make a vote and hire them. I mean, but on that, the same line, you're giving us your recommendation and you believe that he will be able to fill the role.
Yes.
So where, how far do we take this, I guess?
Well, maybe Greg could tell us a kind of something about it. He's the one that's recommending him.
During the interview, he's trying to move back to Newcastle. He's coming back to take care of family members, a family member. He's currently working in Rapid City at the post office. I'm not sure what else I can, I am supposed to say from there. So seems like a quality person, very upbeat, interested in moving back to Newcastle and looking for rest.
Well, I have to throw this out there too, Tom.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, I spoke to chief about an officer that we hired and and he had recommended him on a conditional offer at the beginning of December or was it the end of November?
I think it was the end of December and asked for, to give him a conditional offer contingent on background investigation.
So then with the police officers, I mean, the background investigation and psychological and everything take time. So I didn't remember from the prior meeting that he had been recommended.
But. And I believe it should be the department's heads responsibility to do those interviews pieces for that piece and not not have us intervene into their pieces, obviously bringing them to us. If they're not gonna recommend you, they're not gonna bring them to us to recommend or hire. I don't like putting my fingers into letting them do their job. Obviously, the department heads, I think that should be up to us to try to figure out who may be in that department position. And outside of that, for their employees, I believe that they should have that leeway to vet that.
So how close are you to being fully staffed, Greg?
Dan Dahl makes seventeen, we have eighteen positions, so.
That's all I got.
On the application for the job, is there a criminal background questions or?
The rest of the post office.
The, well, the only thing it asks or the only thing we ask is are they, where they can get through the fellow. Okay.
Who was telling you said no?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
Next item, Nick Rowe has finished his probationary hearing. They request to recommend Nick for full-time position with fifty cent raise.
I know that we've had Nick Rowe's full-time position with his fifty cent rate.
Second.
Yeah.
Yeah, effective when?
February sixth, sorry.
As he said.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you. Want to remind personnel committee, we go to meeting tomorrow at four thirty. We go over several things. There is four thirty.
What kind of meeting?
Personnel. Personnel.
We do have a few things to go over, so it'll take probably about an hour, I'm guessing. All three department heads will be there and have something to present. I'll ditch you the agenda, you know, Murray. I would also like to request a water sewer committee meeting to discuss future plans and some issues that arose recently. It's all right with the committee. I'll email you with days we can go back out.
Are we trying to do it next week?
We need to do it before the thirteenth of March, so we need to have some.
I'll have availability next week.
Next week.
Okay.
Other than that, the reports, are there any questions?
The, that one piece of equivalent that came in that you're working on, is that, is that for the RBs? The water, the water? I read it just a minute.
I don't know, Tom, I've got a lot of stuff.
Anyways, how's this?
The RV things, we're getting there. We've got a couple other service lines to work on that came up recently. We're working on those first and then we'll get on that. It'll be done before.
Camping season.
Camping season, sorry.
Any questions?
Vera was the swing voter. She's very powerful. What's your, you know, that you could talk about the chairmanship and everything else. It still comes down to you need three votes to win stuff. Do you think Vera enjoys that or do you think it's just she accepts that's the job and and she's taking it on herself to go ahead and be that person?
I think she, from what I gather from watching the meetings, I haven't been to a meeting in person in a long time. But from watching them and listening to it, I think she accepts that role. Obviously, I can't speak for her, but I, I don't know how much I would enjoy being that person. I think it's a hard job and I think you're in a hard place, especially when you have to sit between those two groups of men every meeting and be that person in the middle, which I, I think she might be in the middle all of the way. I think she might sit between them too.
Yeah, a lot of fur flies around Vera and.
Police Chief Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I have the calls for service since, since February fifth of this year. Newcastle Police Department fielded one hundred and ninety-nine calls, Weston County Sheriff's Office fielded eighty-one calls, Upton Police Department fielded thirty-nine calls, Newcastle Fire fielded three calls, Weston County Fire, again, there was a high number of fifty-two, but all but one were controlled burns. Upton Fire, four calls, Newcastle Ambulance, twenty-six calls, and Upton Ambulance, three calls. Only other thing I had was, unless anybody has any questions on that. As far as the Joint Powers Board, we did hire David Larson as the director for the Joint Powers Board. And he will start next week, I believe.
Who's he from here?
He was a police officer in Upton for she was twelve years, nine, so, yeah.
Is he gonna be just that same too?
He's gonna go to, so he has to go to basic because he's not a certified dispatcher, but he will be doing some dispatching, especially in the beginning, so. But he has pretty extensive administrative experience, so I thought he was a pretty good fit for the job.
I mean, it's not gonna change anything, but there wasn't any of our current dispatchers that were interested in the position or applied?
There were. There was one current dispatcher that did apply. But the administrative experience, I think, was what won everybody over, so. That's all I have.
I see we have a new PD car vehicle out there.
Yeah, they're, they're both out there, just one has stickers on it, the other one doesn't.
The other one.
I was able to talk to Officer Reon and, and then what's the sergeant's name, Nick? Yeah, they, they stopped into the swimming event at the Aquatic Center. And I thought it was cool. They came in and made, you know, made a presence.
Yeah.
And so I went and flagged them down after the, or when they were headed back to the car. So it was, it was nice to see them there.
We try to get them into events like that and be out in community. Seems to help a lot with community relations and keeping people from doing anything out of line. Those kinds of things, dude.
Anything else for the chief? Attorney Dublin Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council asked me to reach out to Central Wyoming College and Collins Communications to negotiate on behalf of the city for the lease agreements. I reached out and both of them were agreeable to the CPI inflation increase. So Collins agreed to change it to three thousand one hundred dollars. And CWC changed theirs to eleven hundred dollars. I haven't been sent either of those leases as of yet. I believe they were going to send those at some time once those are drafted. those at some time once those are drafted, um, but the change will be eleven hundred and thirty-one hundred dollars respectively.
Eleven hundred.
And that's all lined up.
And for Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday, um, ten thirty. Um, I will be in touch with you, Greg and Stacy, just to basically prepare you, it's just discussing the process of how that went through, um, and saying that it's a default hearing, it's not as though it's going to be anything contentious, so I wouldn't be worried about it.
Anything for, yes?
May I ask, have we heard anything further on the Dahl Park?
That's what Corey was on the reason.
Okay, that's Thursday? Okay.
Yeah, Thursday at ten thirty AM in the district court.
All right.
Here in Newcastle.
Anything else for City Attorney? Old Business, uh, Newcastle Country Club Water Agreement. And that's pretty much, they signed it, um, for what, Dublin sent? The laws that's changed, is that correct?
Say that again?
The laws that was changed on it?
Yes, I think that's what was supplied in budget water.
Is there any questions or concerns on that?
Uh, no.
So we just need a motion?
I move that we approve the, uh, water agreement between, uh, the city of Newcastle and Newcastle Country Club. Oh, and the Newcastle Dolls and Country Club.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion?
So we don't have any problem supplying the three hundred thousand gallons, so...
Counsel, we do not, um, shouldn't be any problem at all.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, Old Business number two, Wyoming Community Gas, Joint Powers Board Representatives. And that was, um, I had just told, um, John and the council that I would check into where those meetings were held, if anybody did want to be appointed to that board, and they are held, um...
Casper.
Yeah, the first one, the, um, one is in Casper, um, two of them are at the community that decides to host, which is open, um, to those communities, and then one is in December is, uh, virtual.
Have we had anybody from the council represented on that board before?
Not since I...
Do we have to have somebody there?
You just have the option.
It, uh, it sounds to me like there's a lot of entertainment Friday night, then straight business Saturday, but I think they have everything already laid out, they're just gonna say this is what we have.
For their meeting in March? Um, any business?
Madam Mayor, um, here's one I moved, I dropped the ball, I apologize. Uh, we had talked in the past about water sales outside of city limits in Newcastle, but we didn't go any farther than just a minor discussion about it. Um, Mr. Ottawa would, was wondering where we were at on it, so, as far as selling water outside of city limits.
Uh, I think that it was the recommendation of the committee that we entertain it, um, but we need to try to figure out the appropriate way to handle it.
Right. What that would look like.
Cause I was getting ready to just jump right on it and then Councilman Steveson kinda threw that out there as a, as a cautionary, that we figured out a better way to handle it. Um, I was all about getting the, uh, added revenue to our community through water sales, um, because it, I believe that that's kind of held us back in the past. I think that, uh, not offering it unless, uh, someone was annexed has kind of, um, yes, it grows our footprint when we annex people in, but it also deters people from wanting the service when they have to annex in, so if we want the revenue, I, I think that it, it's a good idea to offer, there's a lot of cities in Wyoming that offer, um, uh, sales of their, their services out of city limits.
Uh, would it be all right if I added it to the agenda for the next work committee?
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Um, claims against the city dated February twentieth, not the fifth, two thousand and four.
Madam Mayor, I move that we pay the claims against the city.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Can I have a motion to leave, uh, the regular city council session to enter into executive session, uh, for Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five A double I personnel?
So move first.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, moving into executive session at seven fifty-five. Thank you, guys. Now we get a motion.
I move that we grant, uh, Greg Stumpf the ability to, uh, give an extended leave of absence to an employee for a hundred and eighty days.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I have a question for, just thinking of, as I was going through on the sanitation committee, did when they met and increased the timeframe for garbage truck today, did you guys think about, you know, we're getting down to the garbage business with the landfill of, we looked at this several years ago, uh, potentially having another company come in and do sanitation with, with the cost of three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, now we're cutting that in half, we'll, we probably need to look at that realm too, to see if that's feasible. Might not be, but I think that's something we need to look at.
So I thought that, you know, in, in prior meeting meetings, that we recognize the fact that with the remediation of, um, the, the two landfills, that we were gonna kind of need to be in the garbage business for an extended period of time. Um, I don't know that it's gonna go out past ten years or eight years, I guess, so, I mean, um, I, I don't see why it would be a problem to like see about replacing the garbage trucks until we get to that juncture.
Correct, and just making sure we're looking at all the aspects of it, you know, and I know when we looked at it, it was, it was looking favorable of the cost of the garbage truck and having a service come in to do them and then those employees being absorbed in with the, the maintenance personnel.
Oh.
Um, it just kind of the thoughts, you know, it's like, oh, now we're gonna cut that in half again, you know, we doubling our costs now for these trucks, you know, and what's that look like now versus a service coming in to do it for us?
I guess that would be a subject for another committee meeting to discuss.
Counsel, we, I did look at some of that stuff. The problem is the money we lose on what revenue we can make by having your own service. Um, it would offset the cost of, when we looked at it, we were looking at making like eight or nine dollars over and above what cer- other service would cost. Um, it was almost a wash other than we still have these two landfills to, these legacy landfills to deal with, and we were looking at the extra revenue we would make off collecting ourselves. Yeah, the two landfills will never get rid of, they're gonna be... They're gonna cost for... They're gonna be a thorn in our budget for a year.
The word that...
I think just annex them, sound like, um...
What's that?
We can just annex them.
Yeah. They are annexed. Yeah. And we can look closer at it. Um, problem is we really couldn't get a good number from a company. When I called them, they said it'd be a, a range of this, and then the questions started coming and the more I talked, the less money we were gonna have in the end. Um, I know Superintendent Lindstrom from Upton was able to do it, but they also have one-third of our customers and not as many commercials. Their landfill's smaller and their, their cost to close their landfill, build a transfer station was significantly less than us closing our landfill. Um, we really need to come up with some money somehow to close these landfills and remediation is, those are costly projects.
I mean, on that hand, too, though, I've had citizens call me and complain about the fact that the city of Newcastle has a monopoly on the, um, the garbage business and that they can't, um, hire someone else to come and haul their garbage off, and they were upset and frustrated about it. And I didn't have a lot of birds of comfort for them when you're annexed into the city or required to have city garbage services, so, um, but it was a, it was a concern that would brought my attention.
Everybody, anybody could take it out to dump and dump it.
Yeah, you can take your own garbage, yeah.
Did they get off, do they, off their bill, if they do it?
Well, you don't have to have a garbage can.
No.
Yeah, but cancel your garbage service and then...
My daughter doesn't have one across the street, it's for your daughter.
Can you quit us and call that little guy with the truck that goes around and whatever bagged your week? Yeah.
That, that was what they were frustrated about, is that they couldn't hire somebody else to service them, they're...
Currently, the only thing we allow outside for, for garbage service is roll-off containers. Uh, we do all, all commercially residential collection.
Motion to adjourn. A lot of people dump their garbage in other people's garbage cans.
Yeah. They do? There.
There's people dumping it out.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Uh, don't, don't...
Get cameras up now.
Do you? Oh, I saw him up there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, adjourned at eight oh nine.